All right, welcome to the April eighth, two thousand twenty-one school board meeting. Mrs. Hatfield, if you could call, oh, I have to do this. Sorry about that. Mrs. Hatfield, if you could please call the roll.
Mr. King.
President.
Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel.
Present.
And Dr. Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on tonight's agenda is to approve the agenda. I don't believe we have any changes, so I'd like a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Wait a second.
Second.
Can we call the roll, please?
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Dr. Weiss.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Fiesel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is the board president's report. Even though we were on spring break last week, it doesn't mean that our work for the school district wasn't being done. It was, I, if you saw me on Channel Four, I was actually in Las Vegas when I was doing that interview. But we are especially working hard when it comes to school funding for our district, both in the way of pandemic relief funds and fixing the state school funding formula. Regarding the pandemic relief funding and the fact that Olentangie did not and will not receive funding in the second round of the CARES Act nor under the American Rescue Plan, we do not have a resolution yet. Just as a reminder, the surrounding school districts are getting millions of dollars from the federal government in the way of pandemic relief funds. I have spoken to Congressman Troy Balderson's office regarding what he can do for us at the federal level, and I have to give credit where credit's due because, I mean, we were even speaking this afternoon. So I, I really have to thank him. I think we've talked three times now, you know, sent the office additional information. At the federal level, he's really seeing what can be done, and I truly appreciate the work that he is doing for our school district. At the state level, we've all been in contact with the Ohio Department of Education, the Ohio School Boards Association, the governor's office, and our elected officials in the House and Senate. And they are all saying that they're working on a resolution. We don't, we just don't know what that resolution is. It's not like you can say, hey, treasure sprag, cut a check to Olentangie. I mean, they have to figure out how they're going to do this. I, I honestly don't think that anyone realized that a school district could not get any pandemic relief funding. And all we've been asking for is what is fair. I mean, if there's a similar school district to us that's getting, you know, ten million dollars, and then if we're getting nothing, that, I have people ask me, how can they, the school district that's right next door to us, that has, you know, a smaller student population, get ten million dollars and Olentangie get nothing? So I have to explain to them that this is because the federal government based the dispersment of pandemic relief funding on the number of disadvantaged students. And according to the records, we don't have enough disadvantaged students to qualify. Now, we have pandemic expenses.
Absolutely.
But.
Absolutely.
But because we don't have enough disadvantaged students, according to their formula, we don't qualify. So it's rather disheartening, and I continue to work on that. Now regarding state funding, the Ohio House and Senate are on spring break now. When they return, the House will come back next week. It's expected that the House will pass House Bill One, which is the Fair School Funding Plan that gives the structure for a new school funding formula. I received information today from the Ohio School Boards Association that looks at how much Olentangie would get if House Bill One is passed as it is, passed into law. That would mean Olentangie would go from receiving about five hundred dollars per pupil from the state to two thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Two thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars per pupil. Just to give you an equation, what does that equate to? That's an eleven mil operating levy for us.
Wow.
Huge.
That's huge. So, you know, I've had people say to me, why are you always commenting on funding? Why, why are you always commenting on funding? Well, that's because funding falls into the wheelhouse of a school board member. Funding impacts all the students, all the staff, and all the community members. I explain our role as a school board member as we deal with issues at the macro level, the high-level issues, while the administration deals with issues at the micro level. It's not that I nor the other school board members don't care about micro-level issues. It's just that we are staying in our lane. I, if given the choice between getting involved in the day-to-day operations or helping to pass legislation that would benefit everyone in our school district, I'm investing my time in the latter because I have confidence in the team here that is making the day-to-day decisions. And I hope that you understand that. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Mr. Rafe?
Good, good, good evening. Thank you, thank you, and welcome, everyone, our OYUP viewing twenty-seven-ish. All right, welcome to the twenty-seven viewers out there, so I hope everybody had a nice spring break and got a good start back, so got a lot of great stuff to share, a lot of good things going on all throughout the district, so as you know, our One Community Conference this year has been a series of events, and so on March twenty-seventh, that actually the first Saturday of spring break, we had two hundred and ten families supported ten different service partners throughout the area in Delaware and Franklin County. As you know, this grew out of the collaboration across two of our initiatives, the Curriculum Project designed to engage in broader district, uh, community engagement and then that hands-on experience as part of the One Community Conference. So again, I want to compliment the work of our Equity and Inclusion Team and all that they're doing to, uh, with this, with this effort. There, and I just want to give a shout out to Mrs. Fiesel. I will say, Mrs. Fiesel, I did overall the original picture the communications team had on there, too, because it was less like a lot of pictures they put on of me, it was less flattering.
Yes. It's the message that counts.
It is, but I mean, we appreciate, and again, we appreciate that, because as you said, that this funding issue affects every single person in Olentangie, it affects the students, the staff, but every community member, whether they have children or not, and finding tax relief for our residents is, is worth the fight, and we greatly appreciate you taking it on, as all the board members, and Mrs. Hatfield and I are all actively involved in this, this effort as well. Want to highlight the winter sports activities going on throughout the, that have completed and highlight some great students there. You see, Olentangie High School had good swim season for the girls, finished sixth in the state. Karen Kirkher was seventh in the two-hundred. Martina Peroni was a state champ there and placed second in the hundred fly, so two great, great seasons by those young ladies. The girls bowling team was a district champ, so we'll give Coach Green there credit for the bowling team, and the competition cheer team and the non-tumbling cheer team were also state champs, and that's the third year in a row that that has happened, so congratulations to Coach and Ashley and her team. Berlin High School, again, there we see the records for the girls' basketball team. Maddie Goodman was first-team All-CC in the boys. Austin Corley was first-team All-OCC, and I just actually talked to Austin today when I was at Berlin, and he said that he's been, I don't know if he wanted me to want me to share it, but he's been admitted to four Ivy Leagues.
Oh, my gosh.
Penn being the last one. I don't know if he even told me the other three, but Penn was, was high on his list, so I think UNC, Virginia Vanderbilt, he's got a really impressive list, so that's an impressive young man there. Wrestling had four wrestlers advance to districts, and Maya Crum, one of their female wrestlers, finished runner-up at one sixty. The swim team had twenty swimmers compete at districts, and five moved on to the state meet. Brogan Robinson finished sixth and eighth in her events. Girls gymnastics, scored, that's a very high score at the districts and qualified for the state championship meet. Girls bowling was second in their conference, and boys bowling had the best season in the school history, and then ice hockey was second in their division, so congratulations to those Berlin teams and student athletes. And Liberty High School, OCC gymnastics were the OCC champs, and Haley Cobb qualified for state. Boys basketball were the central district champs and had an Elite Eight appearance. Henry Hinkle had a thousand points, as you see there, and Coach Nosman got his four-hundredth career win, two-hundred, which had been at Liberty. So congratulations, Coach Nosman. Kaitlyn Splain, one of the girls' basketball players, had a state record game scoring fourteen three-point shots in a single game. So congratulations to, were you at that one, Mr. O'Brien?
That did, that was against Orange, yes.
Just got to get a little Twitch flashback. That must have been something to see. Yeah. Dive team Anthony Shuley and Kayden Springfield qualified for states, and Kayden finished as a state runner-up, so congratulations to Kayden. And then the boys and girls swim teams were sectional champs. And Morgan Hoffmeister qualified for states, and the boys team at Liberty placed ninth at state, so you see there a list, Aiden Geier, Christian Hostler, Gavin Weiss, and Hudson Williams, all placed individually, so congratulations to them. And then at Orange High School, the boys bowling team were OCC champ and qualified for the state tournament, finishing fifteenth, so congratulations bowling. Augusta Ness qualified for the state diving meet, Alexandria Nodel qualified for the state swim meet, and the relay team of Alexandria Nodel, Kayla Fisher, Emma Logan, and Brooke Farron qualified for the swim state meet. So the girls wrestling team finished third, and Taryn Martin was a state champion. Sarah Burton and Isla Caston finished fifth, and Casey Hamarati was sixth, so congratulations to those young ladies. And the wrestling team was a sectional runner-up, and Keegan Knapp finished seventh at the state tournament, so congratulations to Keegan. So a lot of great accomplishments and by, by all of our winter sports athletes, and we're on to the spring. And as, as is customary around here, spring is a time for schools to start to do theater productions. So Liberty High School will be doing Children of Eden. You see the dates there. I don't know that show. Anybody know that show? No? But I wish them well, and Orange High School presents the musical Working. So again, these are limited audience events, but we, and streaming on demand will be available. So, you know, we're just really proud that we were able to have these events for our students in the theater programs. Want to give you another quick update on graduation, so as you know, we did announce that we do have a plan for graduation. Friday, May twenty-first, there's the Senior Sunset Salute. Saturday, May twenty-second, a commencement walk for Berlin and Liberty with the radio coverage and the live stream. Sunday, May twenty-third, we have a commencement walk for Olentangie High School and Orange High School with the radio and the live stream, and then a virtual graduation ceremony will be put together and shared the day of the commencement walks for each of the schools with speeches, and each of the graduates' names announced and, and so on. So as you know, I, based on our email, I have gotten, you know, quite a few emails. Actually, just like with every issue I tend to deal with, I've gotten quite a few emails from people who would like us to see us to do a more, a, a, I'll call, I'll say quote-unquote, "a traditional graduation ceremony" in our school stadiums. You know, outside, and, and as I've said before, our concern has been that we don't know what, we just don't, I'm worried about inclement weather and the contingency plans for, for events, and us creating conflicts for parents and those kind of things. I did have a group of parents come up with a new proposal. I met with that group of parents. As I told them after our meeting, I would review their proposal, and I would discuss their proposal with our high school principals to see if that is something we want to consider. You know, of course, as with everything, there are pros and cons. There is no perfect plan. For some people, the shot, going to, going to what I call our traditional ceremony, because for us to graduate outside is not our traditional ceremony. Our traditional ceremony is an inside graduation. We, we did graduate outside here in Olentangie, probably as far back as the mid-nineties. We started going to Jermaine Amphitheater, which was undercover in, other than Mr. King's son's graduation, really not a threat to inclement weather, but we did have a hurricane right after it. But, you know, the tradition for us has been, we, since we've been at Jermaine and been at Celeste and been at the shot, our tradition has been to be off-site. We did study onsite graduations, probably in the late two thousands, maybe two thousand eight, two thousand nine. We had some community members, some parents and teachers said, let's bring these back to the schools, and we costed out what it would, what it would cost out at the time, the amount of work that we would personally, we would individually as a school district have to do to pull off the event, because you don't have somebody else running the event for you that you're just paying. And the cost differential was actually very, by the time we rented equipment and did all the different things we would want to do for it, the cost differential was, was very minimal, which just didn't warrant taking on the threat of inclement weather and, 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 you know, again, having to, to do all the planning for the event. So we, we, we kind of took out of our thinking this idea of doing a stadium graduation a long time ago. I know these times are different, and so that's why I was willing to meet with that set of group of parents, and we had a, a, a very, a good meeting, good conversation, got to share a lot of ideas back and forth. And, you know, I hope to, I need to analyze seating capacity, because the seating capacity has, even though the governor says there's no capacity limitations, because you have to socially distance in, e- even if you have ten people in a pod, the next closest pod to you could be, it has to be six feet away, so you can't sit five thousand peoples in our stadiums on top of each other. You know, that's not what the guidelines say, so, and, and I personally am not interested in not following the guidelines. So I need to analyze that, what, what that would look like. So, you know, again, our goal all along is to recognize and celebrate the class of two thousand twenty-one. I've been having a lot of conversations with a lot of people about all of these, you know, and again, it's, it's hard to, to not feel, to feel like you can make everybody happy and give them everything they want. I have heard a lot of, from people, the idea that we set a plan, we made a plan, they're now making their plans off of the plans that we said we were going to make. So that, that is concerning, that, you know, just like with all-in or hybrid or full remote, you're just moving the target. So but I'm always willing to listen and try to, try to make what we have better, so that's what we're trying to do. I would hope a final, 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 final announcement is early next week. Any questions or comments on graduation?
So I'm going to graduate in senior.
Yes, you do.
And I've talked to her, and, you know, we're trying to make the best of a difficult situation. And I think, as I talked to Julie earlier today, I'd feel differently if I didn't feel like you guys have thought through every angle, every option, every, so I, I think, you know, the diligence that's gone into this decision, I think, is significant, and so that's how kind of we get comfortable with it, that you know, at the end of the day, we're trying to make the best of a, of a difficult situation, and, you know, we just ask for some grace from people to, to help us get through it.
Well, the, you know, the common, the common theme I get, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, that is, that is very, and knowing your daughter, as one of my wife's all-time favorite students, she's a special young lady, so it, it is the the notion that we can't do the graduation in the stadium is wrong. We can do the graduation in the stadium, but we have to be willing to accept the risk that we could have inclement weather, and the contingency planning for that is, in my opinion, problematic, but it's just that, that I was not comfortable with that contingency planning. Now, the people I met with say they're perfectly comfortable sitting in the rain for three hours. You know, our ceremonies are two hours long. You got to get there a little bit ahead of time and, you know, get your seats and get settled in, and there's the procession in, and it, they're all of three hours long. So by respect that some people would be comfortable sitting in the rain for three hours, I, I got to respect that there may be others that wouldn't be. So I, you know, that's where I still come back to. We can do, we can do it there. It's whether or not it's going to be the best. I, I did, I went out to one of the, I went, I was at Berlin, so I went out to the stadium. I walked up to the far south end of the stadium, so I could take a picture and see how, what it looked like from the far south end of the stadium, because if we're going to use both sides of the, both visitor and the home stands, we would have to stage the, put the stage in one of the end zones. So that, it's not a great venue, was the other downside to it, so somebody's going to have to be sitting there. You know, and when we, we look at that compared to being five feet away from your child while they're getting their diploma, and the amount of personal interaction we were able to have, that's where we kept coming back to, hey, while this isn't traditional and it's not ideal, we think it has merit, so. Any others?
Have you been in touch with the Delaware Public Health Department?
I was on a call today for, for about an hour or so with all the area superintendents, because there's obviously revised orders that came out. We were talking about graduation and prom and, and vaccinations for children sixteen to eighteen. We meet every Thursday at one o'clock. We have been since the start of school. I don't recall that we missed the Thursday at one o'clock. I spoke to Sheila Hiddleston yesterday at twelve fifteen, after my meeting with the group of parents on my way to another meeting. So I speak to her probably outside of the meeting once or twice a week, I would say. Obviously, we probably communicated a lot with during, when we were trying to set up the vaccine clinics. Krista communicates with, with the members of the health district very frequently, Jack Fetty, Randy Wright. So we, we, we have a lot of people communicating with the health district. Now, I know, you know, there was a public records request and some concern expressed about our not submitting a plan to the health district for a stadium graduation. That's because we decided we weren't going to do a stadium graduation, so there would be no plan to submit. And other school districts in the county, their tradition is a stadium graduation, so they submit, they did submit plans for their, for their ceremonies. So, yeah, Sheila and I talk a lot, probably more than she likes, you know, but with all members of our team. It's been, it's been a really good partnership. You know, she's out of, out of, you know, I sit on a, a weekly call also with the Central Ohio Superintendent's Association and the Franklin County Public Health and Columbus Public Health Directors are on that call, because most of the schools are in Franklin County, but there are schools from Delaware and Union and Moro and Fairfield, Fairfield County, that are all part of that group. You know, so that, that's another hour or so call every week discussing all these same things, so I just, you know, I, I like to just make a phone call or send a text, and I don't send a lot of emails. But thank you. Any others?
I have a question regarding the COVID vaccine conversation. I don't know what, where you are at with that, but I did want to share, because I know I've seen a lot of, and heard a lot of parents that are driving to some distance to get their children immunized. I'm on the board at the Delaware Career Center, and I have a student there, and they sent out a notification, Kevin, you probably got it, where the kid, they were having a clinic, and we had to sign up by today if we wanted to opt in. And they were very clear that if you have a student that goes, you know, attends in their home district, to not sign up for both.
Right.
So I didn't know where Olentangie was in that conversation. I know we have many more facilities, and do you have any idea, just for parents that are going to drive a long, long way, like what the timeframe could potentially be?
So we, we were we started talking about vaccinations for sixteen to eighteen-year-olds about, you guys probably got that about a week or so ago.
I got it, I think, was it Monday? Kevin, did you get it as well, the vaccine?
Say it again.
Did you get the vaccine email on Monday?
I did.
Or Friday? Monday or Friday?
So we, so it was probably a week, we were on spring break, we had that conversation, because I went on my call that, on spring break as well. The, the, at the time, they didn't know how many clinics they were going to be able to do, they didn't know how many shots they were going to be doing, there's a lot of ambiguity, and, and we, we were discussing whether or not we wanted to poll our, poll our people as to whether or not they would want to get vaccinated. Quite honestly, we've been involved with so many other things like this graduation issue and some of the other issues we've been dealing with. It's just, we
We're not there yet?
We're, we're there yet on the whole idea, and, and again, our scale. I think Buckeye Valley's got to immunize one hundred and sixty-eight total students. We have thirty-five hundred sixteen to eighteen-year-olds. So I found out today, because we were, we're going to talk about this tomorrow as leadership team, that the county has eleven hundred vaccines available. And so even if a third of our people are eligible, that would take up all their supply.
So parents continue to look.
I would say that, yes, we're going to, she's going, she's working on getting more vaccines. We're going to discuss whether or not we can make it available and how we do it. They, they would come, they do flu clinics for us now, so they would just come to our school and do like a flu shot clinic. So we're going to, if, if we decide, we'll, we'll more than likely send out a survey next week to see how many people we have interested, so we can decide. The whole idea is, is that we've got a, if you commit to doing it, you're committing to two shots, because it's a Pfizer shot for sixteen to eighteen-year-olds, and, and we got to get it, probably, if we are able to do it, it won't be next week, but hopefully the week after, because that, it's a three-week period between, for the Pfizer shot. So we got to get it in before they leave for the summer. So it's just like everything in Olentangie. It's just like graduation, it's just like decisions other districts are able to make with a one-school district in a smaller scale are a lot different than the type of decisions we have to make here in a large, with a large scale. So.
Oh, no, I just want.
Yeah, no, thank you for asking that.
Updated and.
Well, I don't want to.
Look elsewhere.
Yeah, but I also don't want, why are the, we'll get right away. Why are these other school districts doing this? Now, unfortunately, we have twenty-seven viewers, so it'll be, we'll, we'll put this in the board recap and, and as we send out that information, but you know, it, if we would have jumped right on it, we would have taken the entire supply, and then nobody else would have had an opportunity to get any supply, then we'd be limiting. Okay, so we can open it up for the first two hundred people at each of the high schools. And now two hundred people get it, and somebody else can, and there was
Yeah.
Some, as we like to say, nothing's easy. Okay, thank you. I want to give a, a shout out to the, again, the communications team, and in partnership with OEF, we have now started an alumni association, so beginning very soon, a quarterly alumni newsletter to keep alumni informed about district happenings. It's really a, it's, it's a great document. News stories, information on OEF, alumni accolades, the first, first edition, I, I got to proof it, 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 it looks really great, and I think Anne Johnson? Beth Johnson. Anne Johnson was a teacher. Yes, one of Mrs. Fiesel's all-time favorite alumni.
And her sister, Anne.
Did she? Okay, I knew I said, we had a teacher, Anne. But she's the feature alumni, so every issue will include a feature alumni. You want to say anymore? This is one of, this is one of your things.
Sure. We, the quarterly alumni newsletter will have a feature on one alum, and then it will also include highlights, personal and professional, that they submit. And so right now, the email addresses that we have are a pretty limited amount of people, but surprisingly, I'd say, I think, over forty submitted something of the very small number of email addresses we have, so our hope is to continue to attract more alumni to submit their email address, so that then we just grow this association and can continue to share great stories about what all of our alumni are doing out and about in the world.
Thank you.
I think that's great.
Yeah. Thanks. And finally, our important dates, report cards for the third quarter are coming out. Our Portrait of Learner series will continue on April fourteenth, and then the One Community Conference Virtual Student Keynotes, which I know you guys all enjoy, are on April twenty-first, and our next board meeting is April twenty-second.
Are we doing it at Olentangie High School?
Yes.
We have decided. Yes.
We're going to do it at Olentangie High School. The details are yet to be worked out.
We're going to do it at Olentangie High School. The details are yet to be worked out, but we're going to combine it with the recognition of students. So we'll do the recognition somehow in the theater.
Socially distanced and invite parents.
You may not, you might have to watch it like in the library, but Dave and I will be in the theater.
Like you did it here before, like you went in another room?
Yes, yes.
We have forty-seven students to recognize, but we want the advantage of doing it to, to moving it over there is we'd be able to invite the parents and, uh, have them be able to attend.
Good.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so we'll be in a different spot next year. Okay, Emily Hatfield, what do you have for us for your treasurer's report?
Good evening. Um, I didn't prepare a lot of slides. I just have a couple of, um, items to discuss. Um, one is to just give a quick update on the Finance and Audit Committee. Um, we had met with subcommittee of that group. So a smaller portion of those members to go over the detailed budget notes relating to the five-year forecast. So Mrs. Griffith and Mr. Ratliff from our department, um, met with that subcommittee and walked them through the budget notes that we have. Um, and so we will meet with the full committee next Monday, uh, myself and Mrs. Griffith to discuss all of the information that we have put into the five-year forecast, all of the assumptions, the notations, and make sure that we've got, um, information that is digestible as well as accurate. Um, and so that committee is really helpful in, in walking through those, all those details with us and making sure that we are being transparent and can communicate our story effectively to the community. Um, and then at the April twenty-second board meeting, we will come forward with the first reading of the forecast. So looking forward to that process. It's one of, one of the items that I like to work on throughout the year. As an update on the bond pricing, we did price the bonds for the second installment of bonds that we sold for middle school six and the remaining projects that were on our list to do. We went to market with a competitive bid, which is different than what we traditionally have done. We've usually gone to market with a negotiated bid. The difference being that when we negotiate, we are working with a specific underwriter. The underwriters kind of give us a precursor to what our interest cost will be. And then they go to the market and work on selling those bonds. Um, with a competitive bid, you go out to market to a variety of underwriters. They come back and compete against each other for how much interest they're going to charge us. Um, and so the market is kind of in a sweet spot for this. Um, the interest rates are going up very small increments, um, but not significant increments. And so we felt this would get us the lowest interest rate possible. Um, so we were able to achieve a two point oh four seven interest rate on average for the sale. That's a really good interest rate. Um, we were happy with that and it came back, um, with Citigroup Global Markets Incorporated will, are going to be listed as the underwriters on that. Um, so we are expecting to close that at the beginning of May. Um, but per our bond council, now that we have gone through the bidding and the pricing, we are now able to, um, honor construction bids for middle school six. So you'll be seeing that information coming forth in the meetings to come. So landed in a good spot with that. Very happy with how we landed. A lot has to do with our triple A rating. We were able to sustain with S and P Global and being, um, a sound fiscal management and overall, um, you know, just through the pandemic, keeping our students and having consistency for their attendance and all of those items that we've been able to offer on a regular basis really played into what we were able to achieve during this economic time. So very happy. Um, we have, as, um, Mrs. Feesel stated, we have gotten some information about House Bill One. Um, that fair school funding plan is a really, um, wonderful plan in that it addresses state funding for all schools, all traditional schools. Um, there are some other mechanisms that we have talked to legislators about. We've talked about receiving um, no less than the chartered non-public schools, um, which would benefit us, um, as well. Um, but the fair school funding plan is a plan that is a long-term plan to fix the overall funding for all schools in the state. So we encourage people to get educated on both of those components and to talk to their legislators about that. I know, Mrs. Feesel, you have addressed that in a lot of communications. Um, I believe, uh, Mrs. Davis's team is putting together, um, a communication to go out, explain what the options are and how to, um, help us push this forward through legislation. So we're excited that we're getting some momentum and our legislators are listening and participating when we have questions. That's, that's good progress. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
No, but I, I forgot to, to say on House Bill One, I've heard that it will pass the House because it's the same bill that it was last General Assembly. Um, but they'll put the funding in the budget for it. So they'll pass the structure in House Bill One and then the funding will come through in their version of the state budget. So we're going to have to pay attention to both.
Right.
The fight will be in the Senate.
Yes, I believe so. Um, you know, in our conversations, in our conversations that we've had with our Senate representation, it's been very mixed, very stalled, very, I don't think secretive is the right word, but not very forthcoming. And so it's hard to get detailed information like we've seen on the House Bill One plan and what that could mean for us. Um, so I'm hoping that they'll continue to work on that. And if nothing else, maybe perhaps work with House Bill One and, and address the concerns that they have, um, rather than trying to start from scratch. House Bill One is a plan that has been vetted for three to four, five years now. It's had a lot of work done. Um, and I would hate to see a stall for another biennial budget because they don't have time to get that work done again. So.
I just want to put the, the interest rate on the bonds in perspective, right? So today, the ten-year closed at one point six, the thirty-year closed at two point three. And so I know these are staggered maturities, to land at two point oh five. You know, and, and the treasuries are intended to be risk-free rates. You know, I think that's, that's a fantastic rate. That's a good job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it's now time for public participation and just as a reminder, we have a total of thirty minutes for public participation. Each person that submits public participation by email is read by Krista Davis. She's just the reader. She's just delivering the message. The, this is not her thoughts. She's just the reader. Every, every email that she reads from one individual person can take up to five minutes. That's the maximum allotted time. And they're asked to state their name and address for the record, just like they would give if they were coming to speak publicly to us. Did I cover all of our faces? Mrs. Hatfield keeps the time for us and she lets Krista know when she's getting close to getting done. And, oh, and also we do post all of the emails afterwards online where we post all of the school board information. So if we don't make it through all, um, we can go back and read them. And we do go back and read them and anyone can go back and read them if we don't get through them all. So Krista, take it away.
All right. Um, tonight, we'll start with Tracy Corey, twenty-seven ninety-three Coltsbridge Drive, Lewis Center. Good evening. Professional development for teachers has been focused on a sense of belonging and anti-racism. Do you feel like the training has given all teachers a sense of belonging in the district? And do you think it addresses the issues our district is facing in a pandemic? It appears there has not been diversity of opinions in materials or individuals providing professional development, which is concerning. There are many different sources of information that can be pulled from across the political spectrum to provide teachers with unique perspectives on diversity and inclusion. This would be a more inclusive approach for the district since not all parents believe in critical race theory and other progressive ideologies. A few resources I would suggest are the Heritage Foundation, Hillsdale College, Thomas Soal, Ben Carson, Leo Terrell, Ben Shapiro, Carol Swain, PragerU, Candace Owens, Denise, Denise D'Souza, Larry Elder, just to name a few. We are concerned about the direction of the district and what appears to be a one-sided agenda and is not reflective of the diversity of thought and opinion across the district. Next, Kurt Kovaleski, twenty-eight fifty-seven Prairie Drive, Lewis Center. Good evening comrades and fellow travelers. Once again, the same asinine form letter about the Braves mascot is inundating the public participation comments. Twenty-one pages from the last board meeting. Since you seem to be okay with the same exact letter being submitted over and over and over again, I'm going to submit my letter from the February twenty-fifth meeting again. But before I do that, I want you to know about this awesome article my son was asked to read for his seventh grade English class a few days ago. It was titled, "How LGBTQ Musicians Are Owning Their Queerness in Pop Music." Really good stuff. You board members should be extremely proud of yourselves for allowing this garbage to be introduced to our children. You are all feckless and spineless and not one of you has the testicular fortitude to stand up to these Marxist leftists who are pushing this poison onto our children. You should all be ashamed of yourselves. If you are too scared to stand up to the mob and to tell them to pound sand, I would be more than happy to do it for you. Also, does anyone know the over-under on how many times the words diversity, equity, and inclusion will be repeated during this board meeting? I have a friendly wager going with a friend. Okay, here's my letter that I have submitted to the February twenty-fifth meeting. After reading all the public participation comments from last month's board meeting, it is quite amusing to read multiple identical form responses all in resounding support for ridding our district of all those racist Indian images and mascots. It almost conveys the sense that there is widespread support in the community for the nonsense undertaken with the rebranding project. When in actuality, we all know it was one of the angry gender studies students or an angry America-hating activist staff member who went around yelling, screaming, and shaming people into signing a pre-written form and submitting it to the board, of course, with the threat of being called a racist looming over their head if they didn't comply. My God, didn't you know how utterly insensitive and racist it is to use the word Braves or to have pictures of Indians all over the place? Because everyone knows that the most devious and racist way for the dastardly white man to denigrate those hated Indians and to wipe their existence from the collective memory is to name cities, buildings, sports teams, and schools after them and to make kids wear clothes with Indian images on them. Please, you people need to go back to the universities with your drum circles and gender, race, whiteness studies classes and keep your insane ideologies far, far away from our children and our school district. I have never seen so much time and effort put forth into so many pseudo-intellectual nonsensical ideas, anti-racism indoctrination for teachers, diversity nonsense twenty-four seven, rebranding images and mascots, socio-emotional pseudoscience forced on our kids, obscene questionnaires given to our children, and the list goes on and on. That are not at all relevant to your mandate of imparting knowledge to our children. Your job has never been the socialization of our children, regardless of what John Dewey and all his progressive alcolates believed. That job is for the parents. It's very simple. You teach our children the three Rs and non-revisionist history and we do the rest. It really is that simple. The new mascot at my son's school is a puppy dog. Yay. Actually, it's a German shepherd. Did you know Hitler had a German shepherd and her name was Blondie? Do you know how offensive that is to so many people around the world whose family suffered during the Holocaust? To have to see a picture of a German shepherd plastered all over school? On a side note, I can't even put into words how traumatized that poor dog felt going through life with the name Blondie when it was abundantly clear from all the archival footage and documentation that she self-identified as a male cheetah. What do you wokesters call that? Misgendering or something?
One minute?
You see where this is going, right? You can deconstruct anything and everything you want if you look at it long enough, and that is exactly what these progressive activists are currently doing. It has nothing to do with how the Native Americans feel. The issue is never the issue. It has everything to do with destroying everything that holds a society together. Mascots, statues, traditions, holidays, respect for our history, love of country, reverence for the founding fathers and other historical figures, et cetera, et cetera. And once everything has been burnt to the ground, literally and figuratively, they can rebuild society in their distorted utopian vision. The Jacobins tried something similar and it didn't work out too well for the French people or the Jacobins. I believe a lot of people got significantly shorter during that period. With regards to opening the schools up full-time without masks or social distancing, masks and social distancing are simply nonsense virtue signaling that don't do a darn thing, but irreparably damage the psyche of our children.
That's time.
Okay. The next comment is from Bryn Tokars, twenty-two fifty-six Park Circle, Lewis Center. Hello, my name is Bryn Tokars and I'm currently a senior at Olentangie High School. As you know, the senior class has faced one heartbreak after another. No football games, no homecoming, no Dur Dutchman trip, no sports banquets, no Cedar Point trip, no senior breakfast, no prom, et cetera. The icing on the cake is graduation. I understand that you're trying to do the best you can this year with the given circumstances. I also understand why you chose to have a drive-through graduation over the other options. However, the most disappointing thing is that the teachers and special handshake staff won't actually be able to shake our hands when we receive our diplomas. I understand why this was done last year because we were on full lockdown and staying six feet apart. But with school being back full-time with less stringent rules, there should be a way to accommodate this. While this might seem like something small and unimportant, I can assure you it is not to your senior class. This would be such a, this would be a special thing any other year, but it means a lot more this year. Our teachers have gone above and beyond to make school better for us in a time of uncertainty. They have taught us and kept us safe both physically and mentally. Personally, I chose to have my orchestra teacher shake my hand. I have had her for all four years and have taken seven classes with her in my time at Olentangie. She's not only a teacher, but she is also a mentor and like a second mom to me. I was extremely disappointed when I read that all of the staff would be on the route into the school and not available to be there after us graduates receive our diplomas. I understand that you are trying to make graduation safe, but I would also like it to be special. Having the people there who helped get me to graduation would be super meaningful. I will gladly donate some hand sanitizer if we can make this happen. Thanks, Bryn Tokars. Next, Salon Wise, forty-eight forty-two Normandy Drive, Galena, Ohio. Good evening, board members and community. The push for fair school funding from the state of Ohio seems to be a cause of great frustration for many on the school board and in our community. It's easy to understand why. The school board and other members of the Olentangie administration have been speaking up for months, raising their voices and advocating for what they consider to be necessary changes, only to be shut down by the state of Ohio. I'm not minimizing these feelings or the importance of school funding, but this pattern of speaking up only to be shut down is ironically also the experience of many members of the community who express their concern and perspective regarding the rebranding project for the Olentangie High School Braves. After speaking up for months and raising our voices, there have been efforts from the Olentangie School Board to shut us down. More significantly, there seems to be no regard for the Native American community who courageously emailed or submitted statements to the school board explaining variations of the brave mascot name. Are harmful, demeaning, derogatory, and as one native described it, an issue of human dignity. This issue may seem small and not important to some, but to those who expect Olentangie schools to exemplify the one community narrative it portrays, this issue is quite important. For those expecting the district to learn from the racially insensitive and biased experiences students endured and boldly shared with us all on Dear Olstee, this issue is of utmost importance. In fact, it reveals whether Olentangie Schools is truly interested in building an inclusive and empathetic culture for the entire community or if it is content catering to the nostalgic wishes of the majority. Multiple Native American organizations and individuals, including the chief of a tribe indigenous to the area, specifically and personally asked the Olentangie School Board to remove any variation of the Braves mascot name. If the board chooses to proceed with the, with plans of an acronym mascot name spelling Brave, it will show they believe they have the right to tell a minority group what should and should not offend them. It will show the board members' desire to assert their sense of privilege outweighs their desire for our schools to inspire a sense of belonging. That's why we're hosting a live virtual town hall this Monday, April twelfth at seven PM called Embrace Change. A discussion surrounding Native American sports mascots and names. This free educational event will be streamed live on the Parent Diversity Network Facebook page and also online at www dot parentdiversitynetwork dot org backslash town hall on this coming Monday, April twelfth at seven PM. The evening will be hosted by the Coalition of Natives and Allies and the Parent Diversity Network. It will feature native and non-native speakers and include a question and answer session, providing a safe place to ask questions and most importantly, learn. We invite the school board, Superintendent Rafe, and the entire Olentangie community to attend. The native community is speaking up regarding the Olentangie rebrand. As we listen and learn together, we'll discover it's not too late to respect their requests and affirm their human As we listen and learn together, we'll discover it's not too late to respect their requests and affirm their human dignity. Thank you, Salon Wise. Next, Linda Elam, 10-8-10811, Eckington Drive, Dublin, Ohio. Sorry. I would really like the board and Mr. Rafe to change course on senior graduations. These seniors deserve a traditional graduation since they have been robbed of their senior year. Graduation should be held in the outdoor stadium. You all need to step up and hear us. This community has stood behind the district, passing every levy that has been put on the ballot. Now we are asking you to step up and do your part and allow the seniors to have this graduation they so deserve. Next, Justin D. Board, Weatherburn Drive, Powell, Ohio. I am a parent of a Liberty senior. I write to express my sincere displeasure with the drive-through graduation plan and the reluctance for this board and specifically the superintendent to change the graduation plan now that the governor has lifted his restrictions on mass gatherings. The Olentangie School District is the only district in the Columbus area that is going to have a severely restricted graduation. As we, as we've seen from the press coverage of the parents' displeasure with this plan, Mr. Rafe has not and doesn't appear to be open to a traditional plan that has been submitted by the parents to hold the graduation in the stadiums while being socially distanced. Furthermore, through Freedom of Information requests with the Delaware Department of Health, Olentangie School District didn't even ask options for traditional quests, for a traditional questions when every other Delaware school made those requests. Mr. Rafe said it during his TEN TV interview, quote, "We didn't ask the question to the parents because we knew the answer," end quote. "You are doing what you and the teachers is convenient, will save time for planning, but refuse to do what the students and the parents desire. This is unsatisfactory. During the last meeting, your group read over 25 minutes of inputs on the word Braves from people who aren't even residents of the school district, residents that do not pay taxes to the school district. Our parents' group will not go away. We will not quit until you do what you are paid to do and make these students' graduation an event that they and their families will remember forever. If you put as much planning into doing a traditional graduation as you do for requesting and soliciting for levy approvals, then I'm sure it will be a phenomenal event worthy of one of the top school districts in our great state. Make the change and do it for the students and parents." Next, Brian Till, 3677 Waverly Place Drive, Lewis Center. What happened? What happened to our schools? Our educators that once seemed to care about their students more than a woke culture and fear mongering? What happened to celebrating life, success, challenges, and finding answers? You, the board members, superintendents, and directors have not only let your students down, there are some who believe you've done it for money. "Follow the science" has been a rallying cry for those that have fear mongered for the past year. Well then, I'll jump on that bandwagon now, quote, "follow the science," end quote. Our governor has just announced new relaxed restrictions on gatherings, seemingly just in time for graduation season. Have any of you actually read them? Do any of you actually care? The quote from my Olentangie Orange senior, quote, "They don't care about us, Dad. All they care about is money. If they don't have to spend it, they'll be happy," end quote. Now, whether he's right or not about your reasoning, what matters are the students' perceptions. You preach and teach about feelings, inclusion, and acceptance, and yet the hypocritical manner in which you approach this graduation season is embarrassing. And it should be embarrassing to you who supposedly represents our children's emotional well-being. But apparently, it is not. You have been presented with well-thought-out options which would allow for a more traditional graduation ceremony for our children. Will you act on them? Graduation is the patch, passing of a torch, a life experience for our children some of you so willing, are so willing to turn into a drive-in fast-food procession. And for what purpose? Truly, what purpose? This, I know, this will not happen again. My children will have finished their education in the Olentangie School District at the end of this year. But I will do all that I can to ensure that the decision-makers who have passed this poorly-designed and insensitively-administered graduation plan and who continue to stubbornly stand steadfastly behind it will no longer return to their positions once their terms are up. Do your jobs, open your minds, and accept that others have created and offered up better proposals that far and away meet and exceed our children's expectations. If this correspondence angers and or upsets you, it should. Look into the faces of your fellow board members and tell us and your students whose ego it is that keeps you tied to a mindset that is a failure and a series of ceremonies that many will forego as their opinions weren't heard, their feelings didn't matter, and their ideas, quote, "listen to only in a patronizing fashion." So will you do the right thing? Are you courageous enough to step up and take on others' ideas? I pray you do, for the sake of all those involved. Next, Margot Sebold, 6922 St. Ninian, Neenans Street, Lewis Center. Sorry. Dear school board members and Superintendent Rafe, my family would like to express our support of an in-person graduation for our senior and all the other OLSD seniors. We have been watching messages from the governor with full support of in-person graduations. We have also watched the news about parents discussing and planning an alternative to the drive-by graduation the school district has decided upon. The parents who have offered alternative ideas are on track with what our son has expressed he would like to experience as his final goodbye to these important years in his life. It came to my attention there was no attempt by OLSD to contact the Delaware Community Health Department regarding protocols for large gatherings or to investigate if they would offer a variance for an event. It's a shame no effort was made to explore options, but I have to believe for the good of our community, it's not too late to contact the experts on these matters. I read emails to the Delaware Community Health Department from many other schools in our county. I read emails to the Delaware Community Health Department from many other schools in our county where they explored the options for prom and graduation. These schools have taken the steps to not only investigate but also to plan and execute an in-person graduation. We hope you will consider sending off the seniors in a way where they feel their journey with OLSD has been honored and respected, which includes the classmates graduating together with family present. Kind regards, Margot, Eric, and Emmanuel Sebold, lifelong OLSD student, beginning with preschool. Next, Tracy Green, 2200 Killdeer Place. Hi, everyone. I wanted to make sure that it was on record that myself and many other senior parents are supportive for an in-stadium graduation, whether this be hybrid or full school. The governor has released the occupancy limits for outside events, including graduation. After seeing all the emails with the Delaware Health Department and what other schools in the area are doing, I'm very frustrated and disappointed that Olentangie did not reach out to the Health Department for guidance. I hope Olentangie will do the right thing now and allow this group of amazing kids an in-person traditional graduation. And Alice Albert, 2847 Pebble Drive, Lewis Center. I am respect, if, respectively, asking the board to encourage our superintendent and administration to allow a traditional graduation ceremony at each of our high school stadiums. These beautiful taxpayer-funded stadiums are the perfect venue for graduation. There is no reason why graduation cannot be held safely in a traditional way. Olentangie has done a great job of getting our students back to school full-time, and I know with a little effort and creative thinking, we can devise a plan to have a traditional graduation for the class of 2021. Thank you for giving this serious thought and time. And that is all the submissions.
Thank you. Thank you, Krista. Next, for our discussion item, Dr. Fettie, are you coming up or?
Just for a moment.
Yeah, we have a discussion on the second reading of the board policy updates. These were presented to us at the last board meeting.
Correct. Any questions?
That was the 200 pages you sent us.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
It's only 161. I read them all.
I did too.
And I have questions. I email their questions. Okay.
Wait, just to come to his defense, Mr. O'Brien did catch a typo we had, and it was in 161 pages. He reads his stuff.
Okay. Um, next, we have the board action item, and that is to approve the board policy updates. Do I have a motion? For policy updates?
Peshaw should do that, shouldn't she, on the committee?
I'll make people third.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please. Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you. Superintendent Action Items. Mr. Rafe?
Ma'am, I'd like to present Superintendent Action Items A and B for approval.
Do I have a motion to approve A and B?
I'll move.
Second.
I just have to say I'm sad to see Nurse Jane retire.
You may be seeing her on another agenda.
Oh, okay. Well, good. She's near and dear to my heart. Call the roll, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. And next, we have. Oh, I just need a motion to adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
You have a second?
Second.
Under the next meeting is April 22nd at Olentangie High School. If your student is going to be recognized, you will receive additional information. Call the roll, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr.